I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Honorable Police Commissioner Dermot Shay for taking time out of his evening and spending it with us. Thank you, Police Commissioner. I would also like to acknowledge the First Deputy Police Commissioner Benjamin Tucker. Thank you, sir. Deputy Commissioner of Administration Robert Gannonly, thank you. Assistant Chief, Chief Brian Conroy, thank you. Deputy Chief Charles Scholl, thank you, sir. Deputy Chief Schell from Detective Bureau, thank you, sir, for coming. And Deputy Inspector Mark Malinari from Hate Crimes Task Force, thank you for coming, sir. And finally, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Naim Chima, who is Assistant to Consul General of Pakistan, and thank you for coming and representing. At this time, I would like to invite Consul General of Pakistan Naim Chima to say her words.
Thank you very much, Astaamlikum. Honorable Commissioner of Police, esteemed as Chiefs of New York Police Department, executives and members of Pakistani American Law Enforcement Society. Ladies and gentlemen, it's indeed a great pleasure and privilege for me to be here. And on behalf of the Consulate General of Pakistan, I would like to congratulate the Pakistani American Law Enforcement Society for organizing this town hall meeting with the Honorable Commissioner of Police. It's indeed a very good and useful community collaborative effort between New York Police Department and community, not only the Pakistani community, but all other communities. And since this event is also meant to commemorate the Pakistan Resolution, which we celebrate on 4th of March, so I would like to congratulate all Pakistanis here on this Pakistan Resolution Day, which marked the creation of Pakistan in 1947. So I congratulate once again Pakistani American Law Enforcement Society, and I wish you a continued success. Thank you.
We're going to play a short video for you, and then everyone will cover it.
Hundreds of billions of Muslims cannot be characterized as a minority. We are 20 million in the northwest and northeast of Israel. The majority, 20% of them, is proud to be homeland guarantors.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to invite the Honorable Police Commissioner to say her words.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Consul General, thank you for the honor of being here tonight. It's truly a pleasure to be here with you tonight. To the members of our team that are here, Commissioner Tucker, Deputy Commissioner Gannonly, and Brian Conroy, we've brought many, many people, as you can see, with us to share this meeting tonight. We have members of the Patrol Services Bureau with Brian Conroy, who heads up all of Brooklyn South. We also have, on the investigative side, John Schell over there, as well as Deputy Inspector Mark Malinari of our Hate Crimes Task Force, to speak about some of the issues that are important to you. And the reason is very simple, because what's important to you is important to us. We have shared goals, and we know that uniting is how we get through those goals in this great city, Thomas. Mohammed, I got to embarrass you. I look at my coworker, but also a friend, Mohammed Bhati, who's sitting here in the front. It seems like yesterday, but it was probably three or four or five years ago, came up to me and said, "We're trying to form an organization, and what can you do to help and put me in touch with the right people?" So I did very little, and you and members of your organization did truly all of the work. But in putting you in touch, this was before Bob was in his current position, and look at the organization, Pakistani American Law Enforcement Society, look how it's grown in four years. So I think it's a tribute to you and to all the people of the society that have made this organization as strong as it is in such a short time. I look forward to the discussion tonight. We have members of precinct commanders who are with us, we have members of Community Affairs, we have members of Hate Crimes Task Force, and really a cross-represent--oh, we even have Chief Scholl, yeah. This is the first event that I've been on with Chief Scholl in the last year where he's not Man of the Year for some reason. Really, truly, it's an expression of our point, look at how many people have come to this meeting, to listen, to talk, to work together. And I think that's the goal of this evening. We look forward to hearing from you, your concerns, and really working through any concerns, good and bad, and what we can do together. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And before I open up for questions, I'd like to acknowledge that Chief Scholl is a big supporter of our community, and he's always at every event we are at. So at this time, I'll open a forum for questions, Q and A. So the first question is going to be asked by Ashar Rashid, who's a president of PACE, which is a youth organization here in Brooklyn.
Can you bring my question? Thank you for, pals, for inviting us. So the Pakistani community would love to see more of these type of meetings, such as the town hall meeting today, to share and learn more about what NYPD is doing and to also for NYPD to learn what the community is doing. So my question is a very general question is, how can I find out more of how my neighborhood is doing, and such as crimes? Is there like a website where we can get more information or the data of the community itself and like the crime status going on in the community? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the question. I'm always amazed at questions like that from my time when I was running Comstad or Chief of Detectives or my current assignment, and, you know, but it reminds us of how much work we still have to do, you know? Because we grew up in this great organization. I'm in my 29th year, and I do have to remind myself not to take things for granted at times, and I think that we're guilty of that. There's a number--the good news is, there's a number of ways for us to connect. The fact that you're not aware of them is what I'm referring to, that we have a lot of--I'll blame Paul maybe over here at Community Affairs, I just blame everyone out here. We have to do a better job of reaching out and building those connections. So when you look at across--Brian is the commanding officer of all of Brooklyn South, which makes up many precincts. Each precinct is really a little ecosystem within New York City, and they have community meetings on a monthly basis, they have community meetings that are chaired by police officers called builder block meetings. We have--each precinct has Twitter and Facebook pages that they share information on these meetings. We also have department-wide websites where we will post data about what your police department does for you, and it is your police department, whether it's information on crime, whether it's information on how we conduct enforcement in New York City, information about the makeup of the NYPD, information about how you can get involved, how your kids can get involved, information about when tests are available. So I will have Paul, if you'd just stand up quick, you know, he can reach out to you right afterwards and connect and really point you in the right direction. But thank you for the question.
Thank you, Commissioner. The next question will be asked by Alina, who's from Happy Family Social.
Good evening, respected VIPs. Okay. My question is, we really like the Neighborhood Coordination Officer. Can the NYPD assign an officer who really knows our culture? As we live in a Pakistani neighborhood, so can we have a Pakistani NCO officer in our neighborhood? So that would be much better for our community people, as we have most like 90% community is Pakistan.
I would like very much to make that wish come true. We get that request throughout New York City in different neighborhoods. I can tell you that the history of--sometimes what impedes that from happening is that we are by law forbidden from transferring police officers based on, for example, their heritage or the color of their skin. They can, if they volunteer, they can be transferred to, by myself, to certain parts of the city, but for example, my parents are Irish, and I could not, as a police officer, be transferred to an Irish neighborhood simply because I'm an Irish. And you could not be transferred to an African-American neighborhood because of the color of his skin. So there are protections in place for good reason, which can at times prevent us from doing some things like that, but certainly what you are recommending is important to us. So we do look at what languages are spoken, we do look at the heritage, we do look at opportunities to give people opportunities that may want to work in certain parts of the city, and we do that on an ongoing basis. We can absolutely look to, if we have gaps in different parts of the city where you live, we can certainly look to correct that, but we have to work within the law when we make those transfers of personnel.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be asked by a student. His name is Mohammed Ali. He's from James Madison High School. Mohammed Ali.
Good evening, officers. In today's society, a lot of youth uses drugs. So what strategies do the NYPD have to stop this drug epidemic?
Any drug, I think, is bad, but can you elaborate on which one specifically you're referring to, if you know?
Drugs in general.
I mean, in general, okay. So I agree with you. I think that there's really nothing worse. I worked many years in narcotics, so I am intimately familiar with the ravages that drugs can take on a person. I'll tell you that, as you probably know, drugs is one thing that does not discriminate, and not only will it really have a terrible detrimental effect on the person that is addicted to drugs, but what's worse is that it goes well beyond that, and it affects-- I would argue sometimes it affects the loved ones, whether it's parents, brothers or sisters, children, even more so. When you take a look at what we're trying to do with kids in New York City right now, I, yesterday, and Ben next to me, spoke to approximately 300 officers that just volunteered to be really the tip of the spear, the point people in the NYPD in 2020 with dealing with kids in this city, and making sure kids reach their full potential. We used to have a position in the NYPD, youth officer. We're trying to reimagine that youth officer and really make sure, with a pretty singular focus, and it's a simple mission, but it's pretty daunting at the same time, to make sure as an agency we are doing everything possible to give kids in this city at their best chance to succeed. And that involves outlets, that involves giving them things to do after school, that involves connecting them with services internal to the NYPD as well as external, and that would certainly involve getting involved when you have situations of drug use or drug addiction, working with parents, making sure parents are aware, making sure services are on the drug addiction side, which is very difficult, because I can tell you that with the epidemic of what we've seen in New York City the last, I'll say four years, but it may be more, Mohammed worked very intimately on this when I was in a different office in the NYPD. What we're seeing now in terms of overdoses in New York City is really starting, and we have to make sure, not just as a police department, as a society, that we're doing everything possible to keep kids from ever using drugs, from ever getting addicted to drugs, and then if they do, doing everything possible in terms of programs or treatment to get them off of drugs. I would say to you, it is not easy, but it is something that we are absolutely committed to. We also don't wait for kids to get hooked, because we know how hard it is. So at a very young age, whether it's Community Affairs or whether it's Neighborhood Coordination Officers that work for Brian, we've done a lot of work throughout New York City in literally all neighborhoods, sending police officers into schools to talk to kids, and sometimes that's the most important thing we do, just talking, opening up that line of communication, warning them of the dangers of drugs, warning them of the impact of their decisions, not only on their future, but also the impact it has on their loved ones. So we are trying all of that, but it certainly is not a one-stop-fits-all answer to this epidemic.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our next question is going to be asked by Mohammed Shuweh.
Good evening, sir. As a parent of teenagers, I'm always worried about my children getting involved in drugs and violence due to the peer pressure. Is my worldview is positive? Can you, we have the youth officer directly involved in the schools and social life of our missions? As you mentioned, you already make the plan for the youth officer to get involved in-- can they be directly involved in the school?
That's a great question. I think I heard most of your question, it involves, can, what can we do as an agency in terms of getting involved in the schools to push back against peer pressure?
The role of the youth officer.
And the youth officers?
Yes.
Yep. You know, I'll probably steal the answer, I should give him the mic, because he'll answer it better, if you want to talk about, but Ben's experience in the school system of New York City, and we're talking decades here, we made a conscious decision this year to really take a second look at, you know, we do a very good job on fighting crime, I think. If there's any crime still occurring, it's, there's too much crime, we get that too. But we've been able to transform, I don't know how many people in this room or how long you have been in Brooklyn or in New York City. I can tell you that New York City, when I grew up as a young kid in the 70s or the 80s, is a very, very different place, and I mention that as just historical context in terms of fighting crime, but we're in a different place right now, and on a lot of different levels. It's no longer good enough to just fight crime, it's how you do it. And when you look at all the landscape of different laws that are passed and attitudes about incarceration, for example, we're working with the new place, and one of those strategies that really we have been putting a lot of thought behind this year is kids, because if we don't get it right with kids, if you can define it however you want, 11 years old, maybe you want to go younger, or maybe that's too young, but up to 18 years of age, if we don't get it right, I believe that we're going to be paying for it for the next 30 years with those same very kids. So what can we do differently? And when you look at what we're trying to do with the youth officers, we're looking at really three different segments of kids. There is a very small group of young men mostly, sometimes it's young women recently, that get into a lot of trouble. We are going to be looking at that, but that's not where our focus is. We're always going to be looking at crime. We want to look at children, kids, that never get into trouble, and make sure that they stay out of trouble. And I think that that's where you were going with the mentoring and the peer pressure. We also want to make sure that when a kid does get into trouble, whether it's drugs or whether it's hanging out with bad kids and making some bad decisions, that we do everything that we can to step in at the earliest possible time to try to correct them and put them on a better path. And that's a commitment that we've made, we just, as I said, we're training, kicked off yesterday, 300 police officers. In addition to that, under the Community Affairs Bureau, we have about 5,500 school safety officers that are in New York City schools every day, being a point person, working with kids, not looking to arrest kids, but looking really to keep kids safe. So we think that there's multiple touch points that we already have, it's not reinventing the wheel, it's more getting a little better organized in terms of, and I've used this example many times, any part of New York City today, we can take a look at it geographically and tell you exactly what is happening in terms of crime, what arrests are made, how many burglaries, how many stolen vehicles, how many hate crimes. But if you look at that exact circle, that exact geography in any part of New York City, and you turn to one of our precinct commanders and say, "What services are available for kids in that area?", I don't know that they're going to have that answer. I mean, maybe they will, God bless them if they do, and I don't think it's their fault that they don't, it's just we've never really looked at the problem that way, and we're going to start looking at the problem in terms of being better coordinated with all the city agencies, all the private agencies, all the churches, all the clergy of different religions, all the parents groups, all the public schools that aren't open late, can we get them open late so kids have something to do? We also are on explorer programs, and we run cadet programs to try to build a pipeline into the NYPD, if that's what people want to do, job opportunities. We're working with private companies and saying to them, "You have a stake in this in New York City. This isn't the police department's problem, this is everyone's problem, of keeping kids out of trouble. What can you do? What internships, what job training can you offer for kids?" I will tell you that I am very optimistic on this front. Usually when we have an idea, a lot of people like it, some people don't like it, and some are somewhere in the middle. When you talk about kids, and when you talk about children in New York City and keeping them out of trouble and giving them opportunities, it is 100% universal that everyone wants to get it behind us. So I think that's the good news. I think now it's turning slowly where we have to stop talking and start doing, and that's going to be the hard part, but we are absolutely committed to it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next question will be asked by Mohammed Ayoub. Mohammed Ayoub, are you still here? All right, so we'll come back to Mohammed. We'll go to our next question, which is going to be asked by our very honorable and we're very proud of Kashaf Lusand, Queensborough, New York City Deputy Builder and Advocates Office. So Kashaf Lusand, he would like to ask the next question.
Thank you, Commissioner Shay, for bringing the All-Star leadership here to lead Pakistan. A little statistic about the community that you're in, the city most Pakistani itself outside of Pakistan, Persuade Free Area, so welcome. And we as a community also witness to the success and growth of Pakistani American Law Enforcement Society, we're very proud of them, the membership, all the officers, the leadership that is sitting here, tremendous work that they have done, not only with the police department, but within the community. So round of applause for the pals and partners. The question I have is based on, it is regarding the hate crimes. As you know, the statistics and data drives policies. There's a feeling within the community that there's a disconnect within the community and the NYPD when it comes to reporting hate crimes, whether it's a, you know, they don't know the proper way of reporting the hate crime, or maybe the hate crimes are not taken in a way that it should have been. The only mechanism that the community has found to address that issue is to involve local elected officials, you know, have the dialogue going from that angle, and then, you know, involve police and stuff like that. So is there anything we can do to better that mechanism? Is there anything we can do to educate the community and get involved with the community or vice versa, and learn something from the community? There are lots of folks, you know, doing a great job on the front lines when it comes to hate crime in the community, maybe they can, you know, help out us in the process. Thank you.
It's very important to us as an agency. I will speak about it briefly, and I'll give the mic to Deputy Inspector Mark Malinari, who's the head of the Hate Crimes Task Force here in New York City. We have the largest Hate Crimes Task Force in the country, in the NYPD, it's roughly 24, 25, you may correct me, but members of the NYPD assigned under Inspector Malinari. We also have another 25 members that are monitoring hate speech wherever it may occur, and that's a new unit, and the thought behind that unit is, we don't want to wait and watch hate speech ferment on the internet frequently, is what we see, until there's a terrible incident somewhere and then say, "We should have seen it earlier." That one's a little trickier, because that's protected speech, and we have to make sure that we're operating under all the appropriate legal guidelines on that one. I'm going to come back to Mark now. On the Hate Crimes Task Force, so one is proactive and one is reactive. Mark, I would describe as the reactive. Anytime an incident is reported in New York City, one of Brian's police officers will respond, depending on what the incident is, it quickly escalates up the chain where a captain responds, and ultimately it will be delivered to Mark for the ultimate determination and the follow-up of the investigation. The key point there is, anything reported to us, and I think that that's what you really, at the heart of what you said. The first question of the evening from the woman in the back was, "Where do I find information?" And I keep coming back to that, you know, we invented a lot of things over the years, Mohammed, but if I invented things, or really when I say "me", it was people like Mohammed, and the police officers in the street didn't know about it to use it, we failed. We used to talk about things like that. If we have a unit that solely exists to hear your concerns and you don't know how to connect to them, we have to do a better job. So it's not just internally, it's externally here too. You have to report anything that is occurring. If you don't report it to the police, we don't know about it. Now I will tell you that Mark, more than ever, is catching cases basically off somebody posting something on the internet, or somebody seeing graffiti or hate speech scroll somewhere in New York City, and when we see something like that, somebody, oftentimes somebody on this day is shooting him an email, and he takes a case on it, and now it's reported. him an email and he takes a case on it, and now it's reported. But I am not naive. Whether you're talking here in Brooklyn or you're talking in any other part of New York City, we're probably capturing, and I would argue that it's like this everywhere, a fraction of what is really occurring. But we can't educate kids about it. We can't hold people responsible. We can't correct conditions if we don't know about speech, destruction of property, or more significant crimes like a robbery or, God forbid, assault or a sexual offense. So my message to you is really simple. You have to tell the police. You have to call 911. If you're the victim of a crime, call 911. If you're more comfortable walking into your local precinct, walk into your local precinct and report it. If you're more comfortable telling an elected official for whatever reason, that's fine too. Just make sure that they tell, report it to the police. And we will absolutely investigate it to the fullest extent that we can. Sometimes Mark investigates things that are disgusting, but they don't turn out to be hate crimes. And I think he could talk about that in a second. But believe me when I say that, I know I speak for everyone up here, we are unified in that it is extremely disturbing to us, I will say, it is even disgusting to us, that in 2020, somebody should walk down the street anywhere in New York City and be subjected to, whether it's language, whether it's physical contact, solely because of who they are, whether the religion they worship, whether it's their sexual orientation, whether it's the color of their skin, or any number of other protected classes. We will put the full name of the NYPD behind it. And I can tell you that Mark and his detectives do a great job, but there is, we are not naive, there is a lot more work to do. I'll tell you too, that every borough, Brooklyn here in Kings County under Eric Gonzalez, every borough prosecutor has a unit within it solely to investigate hate crimes and give them the urgency that they really deserve.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you all. There's really very little I could or should add to that. Everything you said is a good summary of it. So let's look over a few other points. We are the largest hate crime unit of any law enforcement agency in this country, at the number of commissioners, over 25 people. We are the second oldest hate crime unit in the country. Of all law enforcement agencies, there's only about six to eight of them that have a dedicated unit just investigating hate crimes. Still a couple of them on the crimes. NYPD has been doing this for a very long time, just a separate unit doing this. Actually, this New Year's Eve is going to be the 40th anniversary of the NYPD having a unit investigating hate crimes. So to get into the reporting mechanism, the first point of reporting is how serious, I know the NYPD takes this as an executive for as long as I have, we have their executives around. If you feel you're a victim of any crime, you report to your local police officer, your NCO, your youth coordination officers that are coming out, your sector cars. Walk into a precinct, flag down a police car, any way that you report that incident to a police officer. If it's identified by that police officer, if this might be motivated by the identity of the person, it's going up the chain over and over again. These incidents get the precinct commanders and the executive staff involved immediately, to the point where they're speaking with the victim. We don't want to let anything slip through the cracks. We want to make sure it's investigated well and thoroughly. And if it's truly a hate crime, shouldn't the precinct commanders be plugged in by the way so they can work with the community? And that's exactly what we do. And guys like Jimmy and Anthony, who call me all the time, we work on these together immediately from the get-go when they come to our office. The NYPD takes hate crimes as one of the most high priority, serious situations because we know it's not a crime against a person. It's a crime against an entire community. It can be a crime against thousands of people, millions of people. So we do have to focus on and get that done. The last thing I'll reiterate with the commissioners is reporting, absolute reporting. I feel, being a cop for 25 years, I feel that all incidents have to be reported to the police. There are no repercussions against victims in New York City. All incidents have to be reported. If not for yourself, I believe it's all of our duties to stop this perpetrator from possibly doing this again. And the only way to do that is get it to the NYPD. As the commissioner said, a lot of cases we get come from social media. Somebody will post a picture and the other agencies you work with, the DA's offices, the mayor's office, the elected officials, will send me that because I didn't see it on social media. And now I have to backtrack that situation, I have to track down that person. A lot of extra work, but sometimes it's a dead lead because the person reported to Facebook or Instagram or Twitter or any other social media handle, and we don't get it. So I encourage everybody to make sure if there's an incident of any criminal agent, report it, starting with your local police. Thank you.
Just one last thing, and it goes to the communication to Mark. Hate crimes has its own Twitter page. So there you go. There's no excuse not to report something. Can you give out the Twitter handle if you know it off the top?
It should be addressable, @NYPDHateCrimes.
So there you go. Everyone has a phone in here. You just type it into the search in Twitter, @NYPDHateCrimes, and you can literally message direct to NYPD Hate Crimes Task Force. So there's no excuses. You'll get a communication back. And I think that we're, now you have a member of the New York State Police as well?
Yes.
Liaisoning. So we're trying to just close that gap, if any gaps do exist. So we have a very tight working relationship with the New York State Police as well. And it makes sense why, because who does something in New York City may in fact be doing things elsewhere too. So it's that sharing of information among law enforcement. Thanks, Mark.
Our next question will be asked by Rajat Daher.
Mr. Rajat Daher, thank you. Welcome all the guests here. Just because we see all you together over here with this community, I think this gives us confidence and encouragement and sense of safety that we are in safe hands. My name is Rajat Daher. I served Pakistan Army for 16 years. I'm serving here in New York City Transit as a maintenance supervisor. And on the community basis, I'm a part of One Nation Us, which is a nonprofit organization, and we do something good for the community, and I'm the chairman of One Nation Us. Then, one of my sons is serving in the city, again in the MTA. And the important thing is my other son is serving United States Army in Washington. The purpose of giving this introduction is that, just to tell you the Pakistani community and we as a Pakistani, we are very much involved in the safety, service, security, and all those things for this faith, for this nation. And we are standing along with you guys on the front lines of this country. So, and we are proud of that. We are proud of that, that we are serving this nation as much as we can up to our own capabilities. So my question regarding being a soldier, my question and concern always is regarding the shooting, active shooting, hostile shooting, shooting against religious institutions, shooting against any minorities. So my question is, if that happens, do you have any mechanism to defend that happening? One thing is, it should not happen, God forbid. Second, if it happens, what passive measures, what defensive measures we have as a community that we can counter that or defend ourselves? Or do you have any training measures which you can work with the community leaders, a lot of community leaders are sitting over here, that you can work with the community to train ourselves and our children to safeguard against any such happening in the future?
Thank you. Thank you for your family's service. My brother is in the army as well, and he's in Washington, so perhaps my brother and just don't know each other. You know, we were painfully reminded of, with the Jewish community, in November and December, in terms of what happened in, I'd be wrong if I said first. It was most recent in Jersey City and then followed by Muncie, but certainly wasn't the first attack at a religious house of worship, which is intolerable, whatever the religion. Those two recent attacks caused us really to take a fresh look at what we do in New York City, and I'll kind of recap that for you. The answer is yes, there are services available to you that I encourage everyone to take advantage of. And there is a multi-layered approach. So we have a number of officers assigned in the last, I would say, five or six years to deal with threats of this kind that are deployed throughout New York City. A strategic response group, a critical response group, that go to strategic locations such as high visibility locations, locations where numerous people gather. It may not be just religion. It could be a shopping area. It could be, you know, Fifth Avenue at Christmas time. But it certainly is as well, areas where people gather for religion. There's also, on top of that, prevention things that could and should be done, that our units, we need to think of what we've seen recently, not just in New York City, but in this country with active shooters. We have units that will go out and survey buildings in terms of what you can do to target hardening building. That may be things that could be done outside in terms of planters, that could be basics like lighting and locks on doors or video cameras. So there are a number of things that are done there. And then there's also, I'll just touch on, this training that is available. It's in very high demand, I'll tell you. So it's not something that necessarily is going to be available to you tomorrow, the next day, but we can certainly, again, Paul, I'll task you, it may not be you that will handle it, but you can put them in touch with the right people in terms of active shooter training. What do you do? What do I do if something like that happens? And the proven best case industry, if you will, industry standards of what gives me the best chance of survival? What are the things that we've learned across the country, best practices, practices that have been put out by the FBI and others in terms of, you know, gaining time, in terms of hiding, in terms of at some point in time having to make a decision to fight? So all of those things are things that we look at on a continual basis across New York City. We certainly deploy so that an incident like that never happens. But at the same time, we intend to continue preparing people to be ready if in fact anything ever does. And that goes speaks very clearly, whether it's hate crimes, whether it's getting crime statistics or here, these things are available. And they are available to, through the police department, to really make you aware of what's available and to better prepare you for this. This is things that, whether it's a school or a religious institution, we will absolutely talk to after, to put you in touch with somebody that can provide those services. You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just to bring it back on that, at this time, I'd like to acknowledge a couple of NYPD Pakistani captains. First Captain, Captain Bahidahder, he was the first Pakistani captain, also Captain Diorana, they're both our captains, we're so proud of them. I would also like to acknowledge a couple of our community partners, Dr. Ajaz, who's from American Pakistani League, AIPAC, and Mr. Ali Rashid, he's from American Pakistani Advocacy Group. They're both very, very important and connecting and advocating within our community. Thank you, both of you. So our next question will go to Mr. Farazeh Jolvi. Mr. Farazeh Jolvi?
Evening, honorable guest. My question is, as a resident of New York City, how I can protect my neighborhood and the city? And are there any program for us to join to assist the police department? Thank you, and I want big hands for the cause who arranged that. Thank you.
So what we represent sitting up here, we represent an awful lot of men and women of the New York City Police Department, that I think do an outstanding job day in and day out, serving the people of New York City, putting their lives on the line. Not perfect, far from perfect. I don't think anyone in this room is a perfect human being. But I'm awfully proud of the work they do. With that being said, I also know from nearly 30 years of police experience in this city, that there is only so much at some point in time that can be done by law enforcement. The true magic happens when you have a partnership and trust built between the community and the police. So the answer to your question is, absolutely there are things that you can do. Absolutely there are groups. We have over 5,000 auxiliary police, I believe that's the number, throughout New York City. And it's not for everyone, but I mention that here as a plug because I get the numbers on precinct by precinct, who has people signed up the most for auxiliary. These are men and women that go through rigorous training. They're not paid to do it. They go out, they put in a certain amount of work per month, and they do it because they love their communities and they serve as eyes and ears for the police. So whether it's something like the auxiliaries, it's the same principle to me as block watchers. And if you can't do things like that, then you can, getting involved, showing up at community meetings, hearing what's going on in your community. Because as the old saying goes, right, there's never a cop around when you need one. Well, I wouldn't say that. But we sure are a lot more effective when we have thousands of eyes and ears on the blocks, seeing. No one knows a street in New York City like the people that live and work and play on that block. No one knows the person that doesn't belong on the block. I've lived on this block for 30 years, I've never seen that person, and I know who lives in that house. And it's an elderly woman who lives there alone, and that person just walked out her door. A police officer may not know that, driving by that, but you will because that's your block. And you know that neighbor, and you know that she doesn't have any people that come and check on her. Getting involved. Getting involved is the key really to how we take neighborhood policing, which we're extremely committed to, but to that next level. I think that, you know, there's so much positive in New York City the last number of years. We're struggling right now. We have some challenges right now. No doubt that we'll get through them. But when you look at the historical context of where we are in New York City, how we police New York City, we're in an awfully good place in terms of, I mean, I could recite statistics till you're tired of hearing me talk. Thousands of murders a year, 5,000 shootings a year, probably 100,000 stolen vehicles a year. And now there we are, in 2020, I'm not happy because crime has ticked up and I'm always looking to keep it even going lower and lower. But even with where it is now, we had three years in a row with under 800 shootings. Compare that to 5,000 a year. We have days in New York City, thank you. We have days in New York City now where we don't register a shooting in the entire city of 8.6 million people. We have to make sure that we don't go a step backwards, but we also have to make sure that we do it the right way, continue to not police the city so that you feel the police coming into your community. We have to do it in such a way that you feel you are doing it with the police in your community. And that's how we'll really get to a good place. But auxiliary police, come to your neighborhood meetings, come to your build-a-block meetings. Those meetings serve many purposes. It's an information sharing, but it's also, you can't go to a meeting without talking to your police officers, without talking to the men and women that patrol your precinct, without getting to know the precinct commander that is in charge of your precinct, and you start developing that relationship. And it's a win-win for everyone.
And I'll just add to the commissioners' list of things you can do. One is, you can become a community partner. So six years ago, when we were building our field training program for our police officers graduating from the academy... building our field training program for our police officers graduating from the academy, we also added a component that we hadn't ever had before in NYPD, which is this group of citizens who volunteered to be host to our new officers when they arrive in the commands precincts all over the city. I mean, the one thing, and Commissioner alluded to it earlier, one thing we can say about New York City today is it's probably as diverse when the New York City Police Department is as diverse as and reflects the citizens that live throughout the city. So it's incredibly important that, and I think to the young lady's point over there when you asked about having a Pakistani officer assigned to the precinct, community partners, one of the roles that they play are educating police officers, no matter who they are, whatever ethnic group and culture they are when they come to your precinct. And so you walk their posts with them, you can educate them about the culture of the community. Those kinds of things are very, very important. So police officers, whether they, if they're not Pakistani or even Muslim, they can still learn from you and they can feel comfortable in the community. Years ago, that was not the case. And police officers were assigned, many of them didn't live in the city. Today, better than 60% of our officers actually live within the city limits. That was a different phenomenon many, many, many years ago. So that's another thing. And one other thing you might take advantage of is our Citizens Police Academy, which is an opportunity for people who are interested in learning more about how we do what we do, how officers make decisions and how they exercise discretion. You could go through this 15, I think it's 15 weeks now, and you graduate from that program. But it gives you, we expose you to pretty much all the kinds of training that police officers do on a regular basis so that you then have a sense of how difficult the job is and can appreciate perhaps more how police officers, how challenging the job that officers do really is. Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, Commissioner mentioned auxiliary police. I'd like to acknowledge our first Pakistani deputy auxiliary chief, Nasser Salim, who was recently promoted. Question will be asked by Asif Aziz.
Salaam alaikum and good evening, everyone. And thank you, pals, for organizing this community event. My question is, we see all police officers equipped with body cam and we want the initiative for transparency. Can police respect our privacy while recording in our homes and our Islamic centers and mosques? What is NYPD's policy for such cases?
Definitely timely because we now have 25,000 of our police officers wearing body worn cameras. We started to roll out body worn cameras in mid-2017. So we now are in a place where we have those officers wearing those cameras and we have a whole list of protocols so when the cameras are on and when they're off. And you referenced people's residences in particular. Typically, we, officers are required to let people know that they're recording unless their situation is such that it's crime being committed and they don't have the opportunity to do that, nor should they for safety purposes. But ordinarily, if we're coming into your home and if you make a request that you don't want the cameras on, then they will be off under certain circumstances. Of course, if they are, if you're responding to a domestic dispute, then, and I enter your home, then I'm going to have the cameras on. So there are different circumstances under which they're on or they're off. But we do take into account the privacy needs of and respect the wishes of citizens in the city when we respond, particularly respond to their homes. And in the public way, on the public way, in the public streets, different story altogether. We want the officers, if they're taking action, then we want the cameras on throughout that event. And they're off typically for administrative kinds of activities. So that's the simple explanation in that regard. Thank you, Commissioner. Our next question will be asked by Mr. Asif Ahmed. Mr. Asif Ahmed?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So we know that the commanding officers of a precinct, they are basically the representative of their precinct, and they also belong to some community, right? So is it possible that we can have a Pakistani captain as a commanding officer to our precinct? That's one of my questions. And the second part of my question is a little different from this one. And that is, do you see an increased role of NYPD to deal with the coronavirus-related challenges? Two questions.
On the first one, I'll defer to the earlier question. It's the same. I think the one good thing is that we have a lot of very qualified people. Every ethnicity, literally, and male and female across this. And we have 77 precincts in New York City. It's extremely, extremely competitive in who gets placed into those positions. But in terms of choosing someone to go simply because of their heritage, it's the same answer as before. We would be forbidden from doing that. In terms of the coronavirus, you know, we are working closely. We had a meeting at 7:30. And about three hours ago, all of us were in an executive staff meeting. And it wasn't the first meeting of the day. This is many each day internally as well as it starts in the morning with multiple agencies across New York City, with the mayor's office and many others involved. I would say that all city agencies at this point are really planning on contingencies, worst-case scenarios, et cetera. I think the overall public message though has been, you know, pretty consistent when you look at the Department of Health, when you look at CDC, whether state or federal. It's remain calm, best practices. Avoid people that are obviously sick, whatever they are sick with. You know, sanitary. We had a promotion ceremony today. And when people walked across the stage at one police plaza, I didn't shake their hand. That's an adaption. And I wanted to shake their hands and congratulate them. But we made a decision, we're going to do everything that we can to avoid pushing the envelope and potentially spreading disease. So washing hands, coughing into the elbow, things of that nature. You know, we have a number of people that internally in the police department, we have to look at things a little differently because when people call for help, we go. And we go whether they're the victim of a crime or whether they're sick. And sometimes, you know, we're planning ahead for scenarios where people are very sick and need help. And whether it's the emergency medical services or sometimes it's the police department that respond to those. So we have a dual focus here of doing everything we can to keep people of New York City safe, but also to keep our own employees safe. And, you know, masks distributed in case they're needed. They're not at this point in time. And really trying to plan for all eventualities. But it is certainly something that we are talking about each and every day. And I would like to think that maybe one day, six months from now, we look back and say, it wasn't as bad as we thought it was, and that would be a good thing. But we will plan for the worst and we will do everything we can to keep people safe.